Yes, let's get her here.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year, first meeting of 2023, our big year. As we look forward to this year, we have of course a full Strawberry Festival ahead. We're already making plans for that. We've got Shane Jenkins, President of Strawberry Festival Association, here to give us a little update. After that, we've got the Barbecue Bash coming back to Buchanan for 2023, and then we have our World Association of Marching Showbands competition in July. So, good to start this year off. We're all here, nice to have full council. Before we enter our Moment of Silent Reflection and Pledge of Allegiance, I do want to just share some news. Councilman Thomas asked me to provide just a brief update to council. You may have seen the My Buchanan article this afternoon, but I have accepted the position to be the Executive Director of the Upstate County Development Authority. That happened very quickly. We appreciate all of the efforts of Jennifer Bostian over the last year. Jennifer received her dream job, and so I was fortunate enough to have mine. So, this is something I've wanted to do for a long time, and I have provided the council some information just behind the agenda that just shows some information from the West Virginia Ethics Commission, just showing that there is no conflict of interest for me to serve in this role. It actually is very common across the country for economic development directors to also be the mayors of communities. Those roles a lot of times go hand in hand. So, I get to work next to Mike Ruffing every day now, so he's here. We had another Leadership Upstate Day today focusing on some healthcare initiatives, and we had a nice ribbon cutting with Community Care of West Virginia's brand-new Care Express in Buchanan where Citizens Bank of West Virginia was out on West Main Street. So, that was a good time today. But, I just wanted to, for Mr. Thomas's counsel, to make sure that everybody was on the same page and knew that I would be taking this position and look forward to serving our community in both roles. I will remain as mayor, and I will also, this is already, this is out there too, I purchased Jake Andrews' building on Main Street, and I will be opening up a jewelry store in the spring of this year. I know the community misses a jewelry store. That plan is still on track, and I'm looking forward to that piece as well and bringing that part of retail back to downtown Buchanan. So, lots of news to start off the year with. Appreciate council support, and we will go down to our Moment of Silent Reflection followed by the pledge. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
As we head toward our section toward recognized guests, had some conversation with some members of council. Starting this year, in an effort to keep the meetings a bit more organized, I would like to have the recognized guests and public comment portion stay in the recognized guests and public comment area. We have, from time to time, we have some folks that will sign in and just kind of say, maybe if I hear something, I might want to comment. We'd like to keep it to, if you have some comments to make to council, please do it under Section B, and then, once that section is closed, then the council will continue with the business of its meeting. Under no circumstances do we want to discourage anybody from addressing council. This is a public meeting. All of our meetings are public, and we encourage our residential participation. But, just in an effort to not have, getting in the weeds, as Mr. Sanders likes to say throughout the meeting to lengthen it, we'd just like to keep those comments specifically under Section B. So, at this time, if anybody has not signed in and they wish to address the council, please do so. But, we do have one person who is on the agenda already who called to request to be placed on it, and that is Tasha Carrico with the Special Olympics of Upstate County. So, if anybody would like to address the council, please come up to the podium and use the microphone.
Hi, my name is Tasha Carrico, and I'm representing Special Olympics Upstate County and Special Olympics West Virginia. Thank you for letting me speak to the city council this evening. In Upstate County, we have athletes who that participate in practice union to compete in eleven sports statewide. We have lots of volunteers who coach and assist with practices, competitions, and fundraising. It takes a village to keep not only our county functioning, but at the state level as well. That's why I wanted to tell you about one of our amazing fundraisers, the Polar Plunge, Freedom for Reason. We will join Welling, Hawken, Morgan, Town, and Ripley for our first plunge on February eleventh at the Rebel Rock Boat Learning Room. Jamie Kimber and Rhonda Davis have been very helpful in assisting with the planning of this event and have worked with Steve Reinkopf to cover every precautionary in detail. This brings me into the point of my visit. I would like to challenge you, Mayor Skinner, and as many city employees to show your support for me and my fellow athletes to take the plunge that day. Are you in?
I'm in.
It will be a lot of fun with our costume competition and an after party. I have handles to leave with you. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing you on February eleventh.
I think the recorder should do that, too.
Don't show the mayor.
You might be out that day.
I'll take a picture of that.
The gym's open tomorrow?
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
And that water's gonna be pretty cold there.
I'll be out there in January.
Better have some kind of ambulance or something down here.
I think this character better have a response or just close by.
I just think that'd be mayor, the development authority director, and the jewelry store owner.
I have good life insurance policy.
Who's the beneficiary?
All right, we can get back on track.
Trying to keep us out of trouble. All right, thank you, Tasha.
Thank you, Tasha.
Thanks, Tony.
Next, I'd like to ask Shane Jenkins to give us a brief update about the Strawberry Festival, for which I'm also on the board as a representative of the city council. But, it's always nice to have the president here as well. And, we just had a meeting this week to kick off the new year. We've got fairs and festivals coming up in a couple of weeks in Charleston, and, or, yeah, not this weekend, but next weekend, and we're already working on the planning for this year. So, Shane?
Yeah, so first of all, thanks for having me. It's always good to be in front of you all, and for the third year consecutively as president, so glad to be here. I just wanted to tell you all Happy New Year. I know this is your first meeting of the year, so hopefully you all got our Christmas card, too. We sent a card, and hopefully it kind of made its rounds everybody's hands, if not, Merry Christmas, too. So, just want to start out by saying, I'm here as a messenger of the board. I think often, I'm kind of the speaker of our board, but there's like twenty-six other people who do a lot of work for that board. So, kind of, I don't want to take the credit for them because they are awesome people. I feel like they make me look a lot better than what I am. So, just keep that in mind as I report tonight and kind of tell you what we've been doing and what we plan to do in the future. So, the last time I was here, it prefaced our eightieth festival for 2022. That was our first return of a normal festival, a full-fledged festival as we kind of know it. We made a couple changes coming out of COVID that seemed to work for us. A couple kind of need some tweaks and a little bit of reorganization, but I think for the most part, everything worked. The community seemed to be really happy to have a full-fledged festival back, and we were really happy as well, of course. So, we got some adjustments to make in the future, but everything went well on our end. From the festival itself, our takeaways were that it was hugely successful. As I said, the first one back from COVID, it went as smooth as it could have went. Noticeable things I'd like to share, our finances look better than they probably have since I joined the board nine years ago. So, we've made a lot of improvements there. We also had that live stream of our parade, which was a first-ever thing. We usually paid out a lot of money for that and had to basically sell our soul to have that on TV. So, the live stream just worked really well. Jester Line helped us with that, Strategy IT, and it went seamless pretty much on their end, too. They did a lot of planning. And actually, as long as I've got this platform here, I want to say they did all that for free last year. So, in the future, we're gonna work out some deals with them, but they were overwhelmingly good to us for that. Couple more things that happened during the year. We livestreamed that, and it actually reached multiple countries. I didn't know if you all were aware of that or not. We kind of made some posts on our social media, but as I'm talking about our social media, we reached over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, our reach was to over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand profiles on Facebook just that week. Over like, I think, thirteen days, we reached that many people. So, we've got a huge reach on social media now. We take a lot of pride in that. So, it's just another resource that we use at our disposal. Since the conclusion of the festival, we've also been active. This board is huge on fundraisers and just making sure that we got our ducks in a row and that we've got the funds to make things happen. So, since the conclusion, we've had, we had one poker run in April, which I didn't get a report on to you all because it was pre-festival and I've been here since then. But, we set a record attendance of that. Those are getting bigger pretty much every time that we put them on. We had another poker run in October. It was a Halloween theme. I think everybody came out and had a good time. We had lighted up buggies, and it was a really cool thing. So, if you all get a chance to come out to one of those, those are growing every time that we have them. That continues to be one of our largest fundraising sources outside of festival week every year since its inception. We also had a designer bag bingo that was solely for the benefit of our scholarship fund and our royalty fund, which is separate from our general, just because those scholarship funds get paid out to our queens, and that goes toward them going to like fairs and festivals like the coming up for Cadence that we're sending. So, that was really successful as well. I think that's probably gonna fund almost all of what our royalty needs this year. So, that turned out really good for them. Unfortunately, I did not win a designer bag for that, so I was kind of disappointed myself. But Sarah did, so she was happy. We had a pet photo contest just a few weeks ago. Hopefully you all got to go see that. We partnered with the Lewis Upstate Animal Control Facility. During our partnership, there were twenty-three adoptions through the animal control facility. We collected donations, including blankets, food, treats, and made those donations to the Lewis Upstate Animal Control Facility. And we also donated a portion of money from what we collected from that fundraising event to them as well. So, that turned out really good, and I think that's another thing that's gonna grow over the years as we continue to have that. As long as I'm here, too, I just want to say thank you to the community. It wouldn't be possible to have this and for it to be as successful as it is without community support and without your all's support specifically. Another thing that has happened through the years, we've made large efficiency changes in our bylaws, additions to our board, including the mayor, who stated that he is a member of our board now and has been an integral member on our board. We reinforced our safety procedures and financial standards, and we assigned a theme, in case you all haven't heard, our theme for this coming year for the eighty-first is Strawberry Freedom. So, we're really excited about that, too. We got a lot of plans for veterans, to honor our veterans, and to just kind of highlight red, white, blue, and United States. Committees are well underway for planning for the eighty-first, of course, especially, we got countless messages at the start of the new year, just kind of people, I think, looking through their schedules and trying to figure out where they're gonna be and when. Fortunately, the Strawberry Festival is where it seems everybody wants to be. So, you'll see a few more efficiency changes this year. Some are kind of still in the works, but changes to the schedule of events are actually happening right now. We've just about got it in concrete right now. One large addition is, a few years ago, we took our car show off of Wednesday night where it had traditionally been and moved it to Saturday, just to kind of add some work to Main Street on Saturday. And then that way, we didn't have to shut down Main Street on Wednesday night. It just made more sense logistically. So, Wednesday night, we were looking at moving or having a bigger event in Joelstone that night. We're not sure on the name yet. We kind of went back and forth. The mayor's heard a few of those, but it's gonna be West Virginia-themed, everything West Virginia. We said, we bring culture into West Virginia, and we bring those different groups in, but we don't necessarily highlight our own culture and our local culture here. So, that's why we want to do that, is say, this is West Virginia, this is Buchanan, and this is what we're about. So, every event that we book for that evening and every entertainment act down there is gonna be from West Virginia. So, we're taking pride in that and kind of getting that going. Hopefully, that's another thing that's gonna grow as the years go. So, another change that we have talked about, and actually is pretty much in concrete right now, is it's never really made sense during our festival, whether you all realize this or not, our opening ceremonies, you're usually like Wednesday at noon or one o'clock or something. We're moving those to like the first Saturday of festival, the very first day, because it's opening ceremonies. I don't think I really have to say anything more than that. So, along with that, we're also gonna have a closing ceremony that lasts Sunday of the event, because again, it just makes sense. We typically have those last couple events, and they just kind of linger on, and everybody's like, ah, the festival's over, like we never really say much about it. Well, we're gonna close ceremonies, unlight the festival flame, and have a nice little ceremony there to end the festival. So, looking ahead, what to expect? We have a pageant in March, our annual pageants for both junior royalty and our queen team pageant. And other poker runs coming in spring, so look out for that. I will be submitting the city department requests that I submit every year, year probably just within the next coming weeks, and those are gonna look extremely similar to the past. I don't think I have hardly any changes to make on those, maybe other than those couple additions of events that we'll need space for. We have lots of work to do this year, and we're partially through that now. So, we just ask for your support, and we know that you always give that, so we appreciate it. I can't say enough good things about this board. We walk out every meeting, and I'm sure the mayor shares this viewpoint now, that the board's really energized. They're always excited about what's coming next. So, I love that about the board. We plan to send probably six to eight members, depending on availability, to the West Virginia Association Affairs and Festivals Conference next week, who will participate in workshops and trainings, bring back new ideas and improvements to the festival from that conference. And, at West Virginia Fairs and Festivals, Buchanan native teen queen, Cadence Ringer, will be competing for the title of the West Virginia Affairs and Festivals, Association of Affairs and Festivals Queen. So, we ask you to stand with us in supporting her as she competes for that title. She's been a joy to be around, and she's been a huge asset to our festival. She is just an awesome person. So, if you don't know her, hopefully you get the chance to meet her. So, just, we ask for your support as we stand with her and cheer her on at West Virginia Association of Affairs and Festivals pageant. That's about all I have. I just thank you all for having me, and I thank you all for your support as always, unless you have questions for me.
Your poker runs, are that with four-by-fours or whatever?
Yeah, so typically.
All-terrain buggies?
Yeah. We've had a few Jeeps in them in the past, but it's typically like four-wheelers, side-by-sides.
Where does it start, outside of city limits, I guess?
Yeah, yeah. It starts usually there at Long Run in Elmore, there at the bridge, and kind of runs, they usually have like a forty-mile course. It goes all the way into like Randolph County and back out, mostly micro office property, I think, is what it runs on.
Shane, you have the Horse and Buggy Parade this year, and is it also the same day as the opening ceremonies?
We are. And so, I'm glad you mentioned that, because that is another change that we're looking at right now. It's one of those ones that's not really in concrete yet. We're looking at having our coronation also, moving it from Wednesday to that first Saturday, because again, it just makes more sense to have a queen for our whole festival rather than halfway through it. So, we do plan to still have a Horse and Buggy Parade on that first Saturday, just the time may be a little different from in the past. And as soon as I know that, we'll make it public.
Shane, I want to thank you for your leadership. When I hear that, you know, finances are as good as they've been in many years, and you talk about the climate of the meetings and the energy that everyone feels when they're leaving, I think that's reflective of you.
Hundred percent.
So, I want to thank you, sir. You've done a good job representing. So I want to thank you, sir. You've done a good job representing Bacana.
Yes, sir. I love it. And there's a group of people there who, who love to be there and who love the festival and the community and that's what it's all about. So.
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, Shane.
Thank you. You too.
We're also going to have, I can't help myself, we're going to have a humongous American flag. I mean, it's going to be like, like kind of what you see on TV at a football game. It's going to require 50 people to hold, to carry that thing down the street. It's going to be really cool. So with the theme being much more patriotic in nature with the strawberry festival this year, it seemed only fitting. So we want to thank our fellow municipal league city, the city of Ripley, will be bringing that flag up with them. The mayor will be here with her bells on and she is, she's been mayor of Ripley for almost 30 years. She's wonderful. I learned a lot from her and she is, so she's going to bring it up. We just have to supply the people, which we can tap into our, our school system certainly to help. But we're going to have a large flag marching down the street during the Grand Feature Parade. So that's something that's really cool for this upcoming year. But Jack, I certainly concur with what you said. Many of us in this room have served on that strawberry festival board for years and years past. And I can tell everybody in here that is not currently on the board, it is, you wouldn't believe it. I mean, it is, it's organized, it's, it's a family. And Shane is to be credited for creating that culture in the meetings. It's, it's great. So thank you. Okay. Does anybody else wish to address council this evening before we close out the recognized guest section of the meeting? All right. We'll go ahead and consider section B closed. Thank you all very much. We will begin our department and board reports. And we'll begin with Mr. Jerry Arnold, who I think is hanging out in the back.
Okay, my link to report?
Get your name tag, yeah.
Get your name tag, buddy.
Okay, I have nothing new to report unless you have questions.
Happy New Year.
I received a lot of nice compliments and I think a lot of our council did as well about our Christmas decorations downtown. A lot of people enjoyed the classy look that our, our city had this year. So thank you and the, and the street crew for, for always putting up our decorations and, and for making our downtown look nice. And also attended the menorah lighting back on December 18th. It was a very nice crowd. And also thank the city employees for putting up the menorah and getting it all set up at the park.
And they will start, they were actually going to start today and they had to go to the cemetery, but they'll be starting on West Main, removing the decorations and Main Street will be left to last for taking the decorations down. Jawbone with the tree, taking the real tree down. We want to wait till we have a good freeze, which we should get here soon. And that way we can get our truck in there without tearing up a lot of stuff. So we'll be doing that over the next couple of weeks.
Jerry, you might want to address the wall that has been built on Main Street in front of the Colonial Arts Center.
There is, the contractor, we had the contractor build temporary walls around so that they could work on the facade through the winter months and have a grand opening scheduled sometime in April for the Colonial Arts Center. We do have to do some work to the marquee and that wall was built and then they've built a walk around in that parking space. We had to walk off one parking space. And tomorrow, our crews will be bringing up landscape, the big landscape concrete blocks that will go around that pedestrian bypass to protect pedestrian traffic until that's done. But again, through the winter months, that will allow them to set the tile and work in there and be able to keep things from freezing while they're finishing up that facade.
It looked like the wall on the upper side, the upper level is pretty well finished.
The wall on Jerry Henderson's.
Jerry Henderson's side, yes.
I was just showing, I just got the pictures from contractor, but I was just showing Joey Black's out there, the difference between before and after on that wall. There is the west facing wall is still to be done. But if you've been around the backside of the theater, you'll see that the drive it system has been installed through the back and it's been sealed up. Looks very nice. Very good.
Jerry, you talked about ordering more of that turf stabilizer?
Yes, sir.
And were you going to, were you going to put that in Jawbone or were you going to put it on the Madison Street?
I have in the budget for Madison Street, CJ, I have additional.
For the grid inside the parking area?
Yes. But I, we have on site, I believe it was 2,500 feet was that additional order we ordered for Jawbone and that'll be installed prior to spring. That along with four additional lights in Jawbone within the inside of that circle that we were having issues with when the vendors were set up down there. So again, that work will take place here very shortly.
Great. Good. Thank you.
Will the CAC meeting still be held down there?
CAC meeting is held here. Board meeting is still, they've already been held here. Yes. Yeah. First Tuesday of the month, I believe. Yes.
There's an access, access to the theater will be through the gallery until it's open back up the front entrance.
Very good.
Also thank all of the water line crews that worked over Christmas with the hard freeze. We had some catastrophes in some structures around town and just thank Jerry and, and everybody that was out, you know, in the elements. I saw, I saw Jerry Wamsley first of this week and boy, he looked tired.
They put a lot of hours in over Christmas.
Yep. All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Well, next is finance director, Ambie Jenkins.
Yes, I have a name.
Randy Crapso.
Okay, I'm going to give you your balances for December for general fund and some of those funds associated with general fund. Money market and checking and general fund for December, 847,899. Your CD is at 86,000. Historic landmark savings stays the same at 3,027. Stalker Youth Center capital campaign, 439,000. And we still have a $12,000 pledge to make 451,000. Code tax, 59,941. Municipal stabilization fund, 915,000. Blood control, 78,000. Consolidated Public Works Board, 95,000 and a cemetery CD of 235,000. Sales tax, 2,078,842. And then the American Rescue Plan account is 1,579,592. We did move 500,000 into general, into general fund from sales tax. So you have funds allocated there. So we were running, you know, around 300,000. So we put that money up into the general fund. We still have funds to take in there throughout the year, but we just do what we need to. In your bills to be approved, you have a few words noting TI training LE of the use of force simulator, 19,950. Road fitness, there was some fire department purchased some exercise equipment for $7,000. Scott Electric for Gateway West Project conduit, 4,200. Scott Supply, street supply, street park projects, that's down at Madison Street, 4,189. We have from Ruffy Trucking, Stone, and that was also for Madison Street, 4,875. Jason Skidmore, Madison Street Project, 19,600. That was demo work on, no, I'm sorry, that was demo work on South Florida Street. Those are the sidewalk demos, 19,600. And form tech, those were for concrete forms, 6,116, $16. Roselle Enterprises for the theater labor, 13,455. I Weis curtains for the theater. And I want to point out, this is half of the payment of 4,354. We actually had a person donate for the full cost of the curtains. So those are the bills worth noting. Any questions?
Any questions?
The $2 million in sales tax, how much have we already committed?
This budget before the revision, you have another 1,200 committed to go into general fund. Now I have a budget revision in here, which is going to tap into some of it, but.
You want to go ahead and talk about that?
Yeah, if you're ready, I can do.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
Okay, I think it's towards the back of your packet.
Yeah, very last thing.
And of course, I put with mine the Excel sheet that gives you more detail. We have the state forms that need to be completed and approved.
It's the second class.
But you're going to see the Excel sheet where I have much more detail. This is budget revision for general fund number three for fiscal year ending June 30, '23. Okay. So I'll just jump through a few of these line items. The first line item you'll see is an NEA grant expense, $20,000. That actually is an NEA grant that we are using for an event with Wamsley. Now that's a 50/50 grant match and we have people who have donated the $10,000. The city won't expense anything, but it does run through, council approved using the city to fill, to run this grant through. So we have donations coming in at 10,000, the grants at 20,000. So there's a $20,000 grant there. Professional legal, the reason that's 11,200, as you recall, Tom O'Neill is now contracted service. So you'll also see where we remove city attorney salaries. So those are, those are coming out. So 11,200 in professional, but then we're removing the city attorney's FICA insurance and salary. Let's see, other things. I'm going to go down through here for bigger ones. Okay, but here's a larger one. Engineering service test of 374,000. Council approved the design plans for the Stalker Youth Center building. Now that will be reimbursed back to general fund once the financing's completed. So you approved a resolution to have those reimbursed through the bond financing that we'll do once that's in place. But we have to expense the money out, out first because that work has to be done. We have data processing, the aging network, we're seeing a lot more repairs. So I had to add $6,000 to that. The minor ones, police uniforms, 1,400. Street materials and supplies, I talked to Jerry, we'll probably revisit this again later. We know this won't be our last revision, but we added 5,500 to that. Walk trail grant, the poundstone walk trail, we're doing some work there and there's a grant, $40,000. And we've got 40,000 coming in and 40,000 going out. So you'll see that down in the revenue side, 40,000 coming in, 40,000 coming out. Now that's part of the design work for this part. It's, it won't be finished this year, but we will have more in the next new budget. CAC utilities, you know, we weren't real sure what those utilities would be, but we, it functioned quite a bit during the fall. We had some events in there. So we had to increase that. Heating started being used more often, so 3,600 there. Theater building. Okay, so we have a contractor that we have discussed, Jerry and the contractor have talked about what they think it will be to finish the construction work up there. He gave us a spreadsheet of several things that are needed. Some of it's already been done. So the spreadsheet has more, I think it shows 190,000 and then we bought a phone system too. But the expense would be 180,000 more added to this budget for the theater and that should finish up the construction work. That doesn't finish, we haven't sent out the RFQ for the CD yet. Then Stalker Youth Center, some minor things there, 1,500 for auto supplies, 2,000 for after school supplies and 3,300 for karate instructor. And we actually get money in from karate instructor. They've just had more participants there. Down on the revenue side, like I said, you see the, well, guess in Old Severance, we collected 20,000 more than we expected. City business license, 2,000 more. Building permits, 11,000. And then that 10,000 is that grant, 10,000 from the grant that we'll expense or that we'll receive in. Then you'll see donations of 10,000 that we're going to receive. Riverwalk, 40,000 because we had the 40,000 at the top of the grant. Street billings, we've collected 6,000 more. After school supply, after school fees from Stalker, 135,000 more. 15,000 camp buccaneer fees, 2,000 for miscellaneous Stalker revenues. And then a contribution from sales tax of 388,000. That's to cover basically the engineering services for Potesta. Like I said, that's going to come back into general fund. I do want to kind of pause there for a moment. When we get closer to June 30th, we need to look closely at the expenses. So if we're pulling too much into, from sales tax and we're going to have a large overflow, we may want to revise that to reduce what we're getting from sales tax once we get to that point. But I just want to kind of pause there and mention that, that even though we're bringing this in, if we would happen to get that 300 back from the bond, we may want to revise that budget back. So you can leave that in the, in the sales tax. You still have funds, as another note, you still have, didn't touch your contingency funds. You still have 96,000 there. I didn't think you wanted me to do anything there. You know, we still have some paving we may want to do, you know, sidewalks. There's some costs are going up and they're getting, it's kind of almost too volatile to say it's going to be this.
Yeah, I think I, I can't speak for the rest of council, but I would prefer that we try to keep that as intact as possible in case anything were to come up that we don't foresee.
I just think we may, may revisit that when we get closer to the end of the year.
And then by the time the next council meeting takes place, we should have, have our fourth quarter 2022 sales tax figure.
Yes. Your next meeting will probably have the quarter that.
From, from Christmas.
Yes. And then you'll have one more.
Right. Right. In this budget year, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Ambie, my new administrative matter on the resolution, it should be 2023-01, is that correct?
Oh, you're right.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
I think I've botched four resolutions in 33 years doing the exact same thing.
Yep, you're right. That does need to be corrected.
So what does that leave us as far as signing up on this particular copy?
I think we could.
Oh, you got it.
We can just cross it as long as we all sign it and then we can fix it.
Yeah, I can just call it out. I can fix that.
So Ambie, I see.
Faulty, faulty, faulty.
See in here where we've eliminated the city architect?
I did that because it wasn't expensed out and you all didn't appoint a city architect. So I just pulled it out with $6,000.
We might have handled that a little more diplomatically because the previous city architect was never told anything and just stopped receiving his, what was it, 600 a month or something?
Well, it was $6,000.
You and I had a meeting.
I thought they had a conversation.
We have, we, he and I sat down with him. So the, the current project is being handled by the Mills Group. So that they're, and we are paying the Mills Group through Potesta Engineering.
Well, actually, yeah, that, you're talking about the Stalker, right?
The project that is, the only real major project that we have right now that is requiring architectural. Any questions or comments relative to the, to the budget revision that is presented with, with respect to the 2023-01 correction?
Move to approve.
There's a motion and a second. McCauley and Rigger, this is a resolution. So we probably do need to hand to a roll call vote. Mr. Sanders, I'll defer to you for that.
Okay. Mrs. Buckle?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Rigger?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Skinner?
Yes.
And Mr. Sanders votes yes. And I will send us around for signatures here in just a Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ambie. Before Chief Kimball takes his position to the podium for. Before Chief Kimball takes his position to the podium for his report, I'd like to ask him to come forward. We have, and if Captain Baxa is still here, I'd like to ask him as well. We have some very good news to present this evening. The city of Buchanan, as every community in the country, is rated with the fire service as well as the water service, that comes up with an ISO rating for your community, and that affects your insurance policies. When myself and Mr. Rylands became council members, we were a protection class five. The scale is from one to 10. We are now a protection class four, so that's an improvement. One is the best, 10 is the worst. But tonight, we announce very proudly that we are a protection class three community. So, Chief, you stand in the middle.
Yeah, there we go. One, two, three.
A little bit easier.
There we go. Good.
Yeah, the three does not mean there are three of us. We want to thank our fire department for all the work that they do year in and year out, as well as our water department. You can't put a fire out without water, and you can't put, also, you can't put a fire out without great equipment and even better professionals on staff. This is a community effort. And just so you know, what these numbers represent is on commercial, or on residential property insurance, each classification reduction, depending on your insurance company, can be a 10% savings per year on your coverage. On commercial, it can be up to 25%, depending on how, what the size, commercial development that you have. So it's a cost-saving measure and benefit for our community. And the other side of the coin is, there are Fortune 500 companies that will not even begin to look at a community to locate in unless your community protection class is three or better. So this is, this is very important for us, and I'm certainly very proud of our fire department, as I know all of our council members are as well, and the work that they have put in to make this happen. We were, we're a very strong three. In fact, we're only six points away from a two. So that gives us some things to work on. Once we get a full-fledged training facility up and running, that will give us significant points toward becoming a two, so, which the council is supportive of, and we've had multiple discussions around that topic. So, great job, fire department. Hope JB's not going off or something. But JB, I'll defer to you now for your report, but I just want, we wanted to share that very, very good news, and thank you all very much for your commitment to the community.
Congratulations. So is that the city limits, or does it go into first due?
That's our first due.
That's our first due. So that, the people outside the city limits get the same as the people inside the city limits.
Do they have to notify their insurance company?
If you don't see a draw, you should contact your insurance company. The only one that I know of at this point in time, State Farm uses a different calculation, they take ISO into consideration, but they use a zip code method of loss and a zip code. But most other insurance companies use ISO as their go-to, so, so if you have homeowners' insurance, as of 1/2023, we are a class three. So I want to thank council, the mayor for your backing, and I want to thank the water department. Jerry Wombsley attended our ISO class that we had a little over a year ago, and we really got in-depth on how, what the water department needed to do, the 911 center did what they had to do, and we all improved. Sorry about my beep, insulin pumps telling me I need more insulin, so, but anyhow. It's great news, but we still have room to improve. So with the training facility, that's going to be huge. The gentleman that did our grading at that point in time, they want a year's worth of data to prove that we're using it and how much we're using it. Same way with the fire engine being out there, they want data for a year to show that we're using that as a substation. So when you go through, I think in your packet, the ISO, this is the generalized score, I believe it's in your packet. It breaks down each entity, the fire department, the water department, and the 911 center, and what they scored. So when you look at the, pull up the fire department here. So we did real good on, you know, equipment on the fire engines, the truck, the reserve, stuff like that. Were we, the three categories that we, room for improvement, is training, which we're working on that, the deployment, which ISO comes in and you only have one firehouse, they look at how far apart fire stations are, they take that into consideration. But with having the substation, we're working on that. And then also it went into manpower staffing at calls. So there's the three things that we lack a lot of points in. Two of them we are working on, we're trying to gain more volunteers. So that's the biggest thing at this point right now that we need to look at is staffing, is whether it's volunteer or on the pure side. So the water department, if they can continue, actually, when you look at the score, the divergence points is when you have a higher score in two places. The fire department's score was lower than the water department, so there's divergence points. So those five points right there, if we could gain those divergence points back, we would almost have our two. Just by a little bit of information.
Just, I just had my insurance agent text me and said that she quoted a home in Buchanan today, and a protection class three showed up. So insurance companies have taken note, that's good.
Awesome. So, along with that, I have some other great news. Brea Potter and Shane Jenkins, who was just here, successfully made their one-year probation period at the end of November, so they are full-fledged firefighters now. And also, John Bragnoli and Tanner Smith passed their lieutenant's promotional exam, and they are now lieutenants. So, great news there. Truck 11 recently passed its annual inspection, which is part of the ISO score. If you have your ladder truck tested every year, you get extra points for that, same way with testing your hose and testing your pumps. And also, we finally completed all our hose testing on all the trucks, about 16,000 feet of hose, so a lot of hose to pull off, pressurize, and put back on, so. That being said, in your packet also, oh, I want to get back, I'm working on, I did a gap report last year at the end of 2021. I'll be presenting a gap report hopefully in February to the accreditation committee on the timelines of response times, call-taking times, all that, just like I did last year. So we'll be doing that. I'm also, in February, I'll be presenting to council the end-of-the-year report, fires, car wrecks, all that stuff, so. That being said, when you look in your packet, Mr. McCauley had asked me the last meeting, when he was talking about the Pocahontas Street Fire, the magic number. The NIST report is a national research group, the research, staffing, and fire departments, and if you all had a chance to read it, I didn't know, CJ, I didn't know your email had changed, I didn't know if you got that.
Yeah, Seabridge changed names to Optimum and decided that my email, after 35 years, didn't exist anymore.
So I found out today from Teresa, that was no longer your email. Pam, I keep sending the bird.
Mine's the same.
Well, but I sent it to your Buchanan email, and that keeps coming back, so I apologize if you didn't get it. I'd really appreciate it if you'd read that NIST report, it really tells the story. Not only, you know, more staffing on a fire engine is safer for our citizens, but it's also safer for our firefighters. The drop in injuries when there's more staffing is huge, and the workers' comp payout is savings and all that. So please read that. It really tells the story on staffing on fire engines and the first-in trucks. Just like today, we had a fire, it was actually in Adrian's first due area, but out of the 17 people that were there, 11 of them were from Buchanan Fire Department. So we are still suffering for volunteers countywide, statewide. I saw the other day, I showed Mr. Sanders today, Pennsylvania passed some laws to allow for school reimbursement payments for volunteer firefighters, they're giving them breaks on real estate taxes, stuff like that, anything to try to get, Pennsylvania used to have the most volunteer firefighters in the country, and they've went from almost 400,000 volunteers to under 70,000 volunteers. So it's just not an Uptown County problem, it's not just a West Virginia problem.
It's demographics.
It's a national problem. It's a national problem, so. Also, I laid on your, it wasn't in your packet, I brought it up today, the pictures and the names, that is the 101 line-of-duty deaths from 2022. Those are all firefighters that died either responding to or while at a scene in the United States, 101 of them. So I want you to look at those, the pictures are with them, where they're from. There was one from Braxton County, West Virginia. If you all recall, the Gasway fireman jumped in the water to try to save somebody, he drowned. So, and then to follow that up, NAOH should investigate all firefighter deaths. The five, the big five, NAOH things that firefighters die from, improper risk assessment. So you risk a lot to save a lot, you risk nothing to save nothing, you know, stuff like that. Lack of incident command, lack of accountability, inadequate communication, and lack of SOPs, standard operating procedures. So those are the big five that the federal government puts out that firefighters die from. Also, in your packet, I think Teresa got it in there, there was a firefighter killed in the eastern part of West Virginia last year. His family has filed a lawsuit against the fire department and the state of West Virginia due to basically those five things that I just presented to you. That firefighter died when a wall collapsed on him, nobody was continually watching the scene, there was no safety officer, this commander was not aware of what was going on, and this young man died, so.
Was that in the city, or was that in the volunteer department?
That was a volunteer fire department, but the Air National Guard was mutuating, it was Martinsburg, they were mutuating this fire department. So it was a paid department mutuating a volunteer fire department. So that, there's going to be a lot of, probably things come out of this, and responsibility and liability of incident command. And, you know, it's tough going to a call and knowing where everybody is and being able to talk to everybody when everybody's on different radios and everybody's thinking different things. So read that stuff if you would, I really would appreciate it, it kind of gives you more of an understanding of what we go through at calls. So, but, other than my services offered, that's all I have.
Let's go ahead and take that up.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Yes, sir.
I'm just going to say if council has any follow-up questions on your report.
Can I have any questions?
I just want to mention too, you know, you mentioned the volunteer shortage, which we're all very much aware of, but you had mentioned to me, and I think Joey had too, you know, even attracting paid staff is very difficult. The city of Charleston, I think you said at one time had over 200 people interested when they would go to test, and now they're down to 75, and Buchanan used to have 30 that was interested, and now we're down to less than 10.
In 2004, I went to the civic center and tested for the Charleston Fire Department. There was 834 people.
Oh, my gosh.
They had 75 tests the last time, and they had 30 openings at the Charleston Fire Department. Huntington has 11 openings right now and doesn't have enough on the list to fill. So it's not just volunteer, it's, it's, it's like, you know, I'm sure it's the same in the police sector, I mean, it's public service organizations that people just, you know, they're not keen on.
Yeah, well, you know, a lot has changed in our country over the past few years, that it doesn't, it doesn't make careers in public safety very attractive, unfortunately, so.
After I get done with this, I do have Captain Baxa here to talk about our fire conference next weekend.
Okay, sure. All right, so council, you have a for you F4, and we'll go back to chief to walk us through this, it is in the very, very back of your packet.
This, the services offered is a accreditation form that has to be approved every year. It's just your authority having jurisdiction, it's saying that you approve that this is the type of calls we go on, the emergency calls and non-emergency calls that we provide to our citizens, and it's something we have to do every January. Those being fire, technical rescue, emergency medical services inside the city limits, hazardous materials, and then the non-emergencies, we do vehicle lockouts if somebody's in them, or pets are in the car. We do not do just general acute accident lockout because there's businesses, we don't want to take business away from the director services, that's their business. Animal rescues, we also do vehicle accidents with no injuries because typically there's hazardous materials with that, and leakages and stuff. Traffic control when law enforcement needs it, water in basements during flooding times if we can, if we have enough staffing to take care of that, utility lines down. And when you get to the tree down in the roadway, we discussed that, the fire association, the authority over roadways is Department of Highways, they are called first now, not the fire departments, because we feel there's, you know, the state road gets paid to do that. Now, if they are in storm mode and they have multiple problems, then they can call for us, but a tree down, you know, on Route 20 at 3:00 AM is a Department of Highways issue, it's not a fire department issue, so. But those are the services, and that, there's a, I'm a cat's in a tree, it's not in there, but, you know, ducks in the water drain, you know, drones in the river. Yeah, because when I was fellas, people called the fire department. But those are the services, and those have to be approved by council for us to continue that, so.
They seem pretty straightforward, and it's always good to follow best practices for our accreditation process. Are there any questions or comments from members of council?
Is our current budget 700,000?
Our current budget is...
For the fire department?
No, our current budget is closer to 1.2 million.
What's that?
Says in here, the city of Buchanan also provides an operational budget in excess of 700,000, and that's 1.2?
It's more push than that now, yeah. That was one of us two years ago.
Yeah, just, I have the same form, I didn't change it.
So in the case, if somebody, a contractor's digging a trench, and someone decides to collapse, and you come on the scene, or, but you don't go in there, so what, how was that handled and resolved?
A trench rescue?
Yeah.
Well, first of all, we have agreements with like Bridgeport, who are, finds, they have the equipment. We have people that are operationally trained, but we don't have all the equipment. We would try to mitigate what we could, and if we couldn't get them out, we'd try to stabilize the area until we could get Bridgeport.
So it's not like you're going to come and sit stand and...
Oh, no, no.
It's just...
No, you're going to do whatever you can. A trench rescue is typically one of the most dangerous aspects that you go into, and, you know, I've seen some bad endings to some of those, and, you know, it's just...
Pretty scary.
Yes.
I will add on that note, we actually have no way with trench rescue to no level, but we have talked with Jerry Arnold about creating a space at the training facility to actually train public workers and safety personnel in best practices, because actually the biggest, the biggest threat we have is not contractors, it is actually our city employees. So that's, they probably do more trench work than anybody in the county.
Especially the sewer department.
Jerry actually has something to say.
Just to add to what Joey was saying, this, I brought this up at an LTAP meeting, a West Virginia LTAP meeting, and they were very interested in other communities being able to train in trench rescue.
Yeah, I mean, if you get buried, you can be just buried up there and die because of the pressure of the...
And typically what happens is, is, you know, sometimes what happens is a person gets buried, and then they try to dig him out with the equipment they got, and that usually does not turn out well. So it is a horrible situation. Yes, sir.
Going through packs of ocean training and all of that for trenching and shoring the walls up of the trench, being on construction sites, you see the people will take shortcuts.
And that's what we.
And that's where the, that's where the accidents happen, you know. Everybody wants to be a little expeditious to get the job done, and they cut corners, and then you have tragedies. And I, I agree, I think trench training.
Couple of things that, you know, we've heard from council about, you know, we were talking about your potentially funding, we discussed a hazmat tech course for us, for all the paid firefighters, and the water plant, anybody at the water plant because of the chlorine issue. That's our biggest danger of hazardous materials really in the city, and I think that's even at the $5,000 class, plus overtime, whoever takes it. But also the trench with the city employees, once we get that training facility up and going, we can train together with employees from the city, and hopefully emphasize, you know, they have the boxes, use them, you know, don't, don't trust a wall to not fall on them, so.
Yeah. I'd say the problems are gonna exist in the private sector, because I've been on jobs where we've got an 18-foot deep ditch and a sandy riverside, and they think, we'll just run down there. And they did, but if it would've come in, that would've been it.
99 times out of 100, you might make it.
Yeah, we have identified that as a, as a training need, and that's why the conversations actually took place.
So that can expand your facility out there for bringing, I think that's, that's a key, we've talked about that for years.
Yes. And we are working out there, Captain Baxa has talked with Jerry, and we actually were collaborating with the city police on doing a room that they can actually use for breaching, and we can get in there and do training together. So, you know, a lot, a lot of collaboration among the city departments, so, it's good stuff.
Thank you, chief. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
We have F four. Yeah, that's right, that's right, we did. F four. Okay. So, so we got motion, and Thomas, did you second it?
Yes. Just made the correction to the 1.2 million.
Yeah. Well, we'll get with Ambie and plug in the exact.
Because I actually might be one of the ones I just thought of.
If you would, yes, get those to Ambie. We can approve the concepts, the concepts.
One of the, the needs can be down there too, the kayak or the river, we now have some capabilities.
Okay.
So we've actually expanded our support.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind just updating those two things, are we still okay, are you two still okay with your motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Before Captain Baxa jumps in, JB mentioned that there was a fire today up on the Glady Fork area of the county. I saw a picture of JB right out front there fighting the fire. We, that's not normal, and we are very fortunate to have a chief in this community that, that is a working chief. And quite frankly, sometimes captains don't work like that either. I mean, we are very fortunate to have the firefighters that we do, who, when the Main Street fire took place, JB was the first one in that building, and he's the chief. So we're very fortunate to have, regardless of rank, regardless of file, regardless of who's in charge, the optimum goal here is to save property and life. So thank you for that. Captain?
Before we move on, talk about the council, I do want to kind of update you on the training facilities, since we have made some moves with that. I've talked with Jerry, Jerry and I haven't had a good sit down yet, but we're planning to in the next couple of weeks, we, me being out and him having some family members, we have, they'll make that happen. But we did meet with Doug Loudon from the Police Department, and my brother, we talked about position, how we're gonna position some of the problems, what we have in store for it. The inside thing that Chief alluded to, we're actually gonna lay out a whole ranch style house inside that, the metal building out there, because one of the deficiencies that the police department has noted is just realistic training. You know, the ability to actually train and where they're gonna operate. So we're gonna lay out a house that'll be used for them for as far as like breaching and searching through houses for bad guys or whatever police officers do, and that's not high around.
Whatever they do.
But we're, we're easy for searching for victims, because the fire that we respond to the most is the ranch style residential house. I mean, so what better to train than, than one that's actually laid out like that with real, real doors, things of that nature. We're actually, we actually already have some money set aside to do that out of this year's budget, so that's, that's because we've had some things come in a little cheaper. So we're gonna start down that path right now. The other thing on top of the trench rescue that we've talked about, setting up some space for is confined space rescue fraud, and that was something else that we talked to Jerry about, about using with city workers, some of our public works employees, because you know, that's another danger we have. And I always say, you know, we ask about us being capable to respond to, but some of the best things we can do is prevent it from even happening, just like with fires, we do fire prevention, but if we can prevent the emergency, then the need goes down. It's not saying the need won't ever be there, but it just means that the occurrence is gonna be even more rare, and that's just as important. Because anytime we have an emergency, that, that's a loss in, it's a loss in packed space or it's a loss of life, so we don't, we don't want that. Any questions about the training facility before I move on? Okay. All right, so something you probably saw, and actually I had hoped to come to last month's council meeting, but that didn't happen, and just kind of let you guys know what was going on, give you an update, because that last year's budget, or this year's budget that you guys approved last spring, there was an increase in the training budget, and a significant portion of that was to bring in more education here so that we could not just train our people, but other local departments. You know, that's something that council's been very supportive of, and has maybe mentioned up several times that we should be trying to do. And as I have traveled throughout the country and taught, I've never wanted to leave this region behind, and I've always said I wanted to be able to let people here have the same experiences that I've had. So if there's some of my contacts and contacts that other people at the fire station have, we invited in five speakers that are all international level, you would pay over $600 to go see them at a conference. Anybody in the, actually, anybody in the United States, I mean, anybody that comes will have the opportunity for less than $100. So that's, that's pretty huge. That's, and that is, a lot of that is because of you guys sitting here in front of me, just to be honest with you, because you guys approved the money for us to bring those speakers in. Now, there's other stuff that we're having to pay for, you know, such as we're providing watches and t-shirts and some other space and things like that throughout the weekend, but that's what's being covered by the fees that they're paying. So they're paying a reduced fee, getting the same, getting the same level of education. Actually, it's gonna be better, smaller conferences are always better, because you get a lot of one-on-one time with the speakers, and you meet other firefighters and you get to have a, get to have, get to have a pretty good conversation. Every department in the county has people registered but two. We're looking at a total between probably 75 and 100 people that are gonna be at the event center, which is another good thing. Whenever we first started talking about this, Sean Harris was still at the event center, and I approached him, I said, what's your date this week in the, in the event center? And this was the weekend. So we're putting an event in the event center that would've normally been empty. So that's, that's another goal that I think that we all share. We hope to repeat this next year. We've had what we feel is a pretty good turnout. Our goal for next year would be double the attendance, we're hoping to put between 150 and 200 people out there, and probably gonna stick with the same week as long as the guard doesn't take it. That's the one thing we obviously always have to contend with out there. My only other ask is, and actually I haven't had a chance to even ask the mayor this, but I'd like to have the mayor or a member from council give us some opening statements one day, just.
Sure.
You know, I mean, I think it's important for, for you guys to welcome people there, and I think it's important for them to see that you all are really involved in and rest in the fire service.
Be happy to.
All right, anybody have any questions?
Do you open this up to the counties?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I actually have people register from the Atlanta, Georgia area, Virginia, Alaska, Pennsylvania, Ohio, Kentucky, and Tennessee.
In addition to West Virginia.
In addition to West Virginia, all over the state of West Virginia, as far south as Princeton, as far north as Willing, and as far east as Martinsburg.
So is the deadline?
They can register right up to the day of. Actually, we've had sponsors turn back in some of their free passes if they're not using them, we're giving away seats right now, so.
So when is this?
Next weekend, January 13th to 15th. The Friday evening, Saturday during the day, and Sunday during the day. The speakers are Mike Akagre, who's a deputy chief of Loudon County Fire Rescue, he was a, he's from West Virginia. We're trying to keep Friday somebody from West Virginia. We want to have a, kind of a hometown feel to it, so to speak. Mike is a very top-notch guy, he's taught the largest conference in the United States, just like most of these guys have. On Saturday, Andy Storms is gonna give a brief presentation, Sean Duffy, those two are guys that are all over the United States, teaching, Sean's gonna be talking about search, finding victims inside fires, Andy's gonna be talking about mental health in the fire service. Afternoon, there's another guy named Chris Kessinger, he's actually from Ohio. And then we're bringing somebody all the way from California that's probably one of the smartest minds in the fire service, named Dennis Legear. And the last four or five years, fire hose, you guys recently purchased us new fire hose. A lot of that's because of Dennis Legear's work, he's basically redone and re-engineered the fire hose and helped with the nozzles in the United States Fire Service. Bringing people that are, that are bringing a great deal of experience and education with them.
Are you gonna videotape these things so you can have a store of?
Probably not gonna videotape all their presentations, but we'll be videotaping some of the soundbites and stuff from them, and we're gonna try to provide some other educational opportunities through them in the future to everybody that couldn't be there, but a lot of speakers are cutting us a pretty good deal, and I really don't want to give away their material when people visit there. So, it's copyrighted, so that's, I don't want to infringe on that.
Economically, a lot of hotel rooms, you think, coming out of this stayover?
There are some, not as many as I'd hoped, largely because we end up with quite a few people regionally, which is good. I mean, that helps us just as much.
The training's important.
Yeah, that, but, you know, as we move forward, we get some training facilities, we're already talking about what hands-on classes we can host next year, even without a lot, if we don't have a lot of fire facility by then, but just what can we do? Because you will attract a certain crowd for the lectures, you will attract a whole nother crowd for hands-on training. So that's, that's one way that we look at growing it next year. But, you know, the added benefit is, is, you know, yeah, we're improving regionally, but every one of our members is gonna have the opportunity to come hear national level speakers.
That's great.
It takes, we sent five people to Pensacola, Florida, and it cost us probably right around $1,000 apiece between what the city pays and volunteers pay. So if we're not much more than that, we're giving everybody in our department the opportunity to hear foreign national level speakers.
I think the training facility may help with getting volunteers, because.
Yes.
It's hands-on, you can get out there, then afterwards you can go have pizza or something and camaraderie, which is, I think, one of the biggest attractions to be coming part of the organization.
WBU actually, and I cannot get my hands on the study, I've tried, I saw the results from it in several presentations by training entities in the state, but WBU was tasked with legislatures on a study some years ago about, you know, why the decrease in volunteerism. And their, their actually, actually their biggest findings were culture of the fire departments and leadership. It had very little to do with what's in it for me and things like that, but it was culture and leadership. And, you know, interestingly enough, since I've been on light duty, one of the things that I've been tasked with is helping promote our hiring process, and we've been, everybody that's been called in the firehouse or reaching out, we've been keeping track of what their questions are and what they deal with. You know, when you get talked about offering jobs, the first thing that everybody always looks at whenever people aren't applying is pay and benefits. The funny thing is, is that's not one of the questions that's been asked. Not one of the questions that's been asked.
You say you can get a copy of it?
No, I have not been able to come up with a copy of it.
Is there a reason for that?
I just haven't found the right person, apparently. If, if somebody can tell me where to better look, I would gladly find it, I mean, I'll do the work, I just, I just ran out of contacts, so.
Maybe we should have the mayor contact the mayor of Moreton County, say this is something we would like.
Yeah, well, I think it was initiated by the state government, so I don't, I don't know who would've carried that, but somebody could do it, that's all I have.
So these questions that they've asked, do they pertain to wages and benefits? How about information from people that are leaving accident interviews, if someone leaves? So you can identify things that maybe you want to stop doing?
We had talked about that as part of the accreditation process, actually, I think it was me and the chief, and Tom actually had that, that conversation. And it was actually done with the last one that left, it was, it's probably a little bit more informal than it should be going forward, but it was a step in the right direction. And there was nothing pay or benefits that came up in that conversation. I mean, it's, I think that's gonna be a theme that if, that if we, if, not, and I'm not preaching to you guys, but if our legislatures and politicians on all levels and leadership took a good hard look at, it's not, it's often not the tangible things, you know, Pennsylvania did some great steps, but I don't think, I think when it comes right down to it, it's not gonna be the discount on my taxes that gets the people that are gonna be in it for the right reasons. I really don't, I mean.
I agree. I think to be respected at work.
Yes.
Is maybe more important than having that their ideas are given an opportunity to be listened to and tried to work out.
Well, and some, some of it comes back to, you know, you talk about being respected, and this is a change that I've noticed in our organization is, you know, our standards have been alluded to as being high and being hard, and I won't disagree with that. But, you know, we have better turnout on fires now than we probably had five years ago. We might have less people on our roster, but everybody is there, feels valued, and they turn out whenever they're available. And that's worth as much as having 40 people and half, half, less than half of what we have now turned out. We have roughly 20 volunteers, and we had 11 people on a structured fire today. 50% of, we have roughly 20 members total careering volunteer, and had 11 people today. I consider that pretty good.
Yes.
I mean.
That's great.
Well, let's just keep working on that.
Yep. All right, thank you, Austin.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, Captain, for what you do.
All right, City Attorney Tom O'Neil is deferring to strategic issues for discussion on our votes, we'll go through correspondence and information right quick. You'll see, excuse me, in your packet, whistle stop grill, letter to the ABCA regarding private catering license application, FEMA GO 2021, assistance to firefighters grant request was denied. We have a FOIA request from Matt Rofe, request the last 12 months of electric bills for each city-owned and operated facility. They're high, I mean, the State Department, State Tax Department property valuation budget from Assessor, and then, yes, you might have seen on some social media sites, we are getting a little general store, it's on West Main Street, it will have a drive-through component, and it's, it's a franchised convenience store, so we have a zoning form to the ABCA, not exactly sure when they're gonna be opening, but they are now hiring. So if you are interested in a position.
What's the name of it?
It's Little General.
It says in the application here that the poker.
Yeah, yeah, they'll have that too. So, you excited?
Gamblers.
Okay, so that's correspondence and information. Under the consent agenda, you've got the approval of building and wiring permits and the approval of the payment of bills. We do not have minutes this evening. Is there a motion, can I hear a motion to approve the building and wiring permits and the bills?
Smooth.
Motion by Rigor, second by Buckloo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Strategic issues for discussion on our vote, we have taken care of two and four, so we have one and three. So the first one is from City Attorney Tom O'Neil. He will be taking us through ordinance 462, which is the enforcement of the city's public parking ordinance. This is, for lack of better terminology, the parking boot ordinance. This is the second and final reading, Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, you went through the course, everything so quickly, I was sitting at my desk, and then I heard this matter get called, so.
I don't want to get yelled at by Randy.
Sorry.
I said, I don't want to get yelled at by Randy, go ahead, keep it moving, keep it moving, keep it moving.
Mr. Mayor, the council has before it ordinance number 462, the city of Buchanan amending, modifying, and reenacting ordinance number 409, also known as ordinance number 2016-008, ordinance number 422, ordinance number 435, ordinance number 447, and ordinance number 454 of the city of Buchanan regarding the enforcement of the city's public parking ordinances. As you mentioned, this is the ordinance that will enable city police, the parking enforcement officer, to use booting and towing to enforce our parking ordinances, as discussed in the last meeting. There have been no amendments proffered for the ordinance, and I'm happy to take any questions. This is the second of two readings. This does not require a third reading, because it does not implement any fine fee or cost associated with the removal of the boots, so that, that is why it can remain a two reading ordinance.
No council members reached out since that time.
None.
No citizen remarks that I've seen on our social media, so they're on our website. We had a lengthy discussion last time, and I think we thrashed out a good, a good, a good bit of it, so that's good. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve them. Second and final read.
Second.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Sanders, a second by McCauley. Any discussion?
Yes. So we're taking this measure to modify the behavior of the chronic violators. If so, let's just say someone already owes us $1,500 and they get the boot. Do they, are they held accountable for the whole $1,500 to get their car back? Or is this just pay that fine and then carry?
No, I would not. No, if they, if they have gone through all of the processes, all the notifications, all of the
Who's they, us, you mean?
If the offender, the offender
Okay.
Has, has gone through all the warnings that are granted, all of the summonses that are issued, the letters, the notices, and, and reach a point where, where this alternative has to be resorted to in order to, you know, have them meet their obligations to the city to, to rectify, to pay the fine, then I would, I would expect that the municipal judge would expect the whole fine to be paid and not just some portion.
Can you imagine anything different?
Right. Well, it doesn't say that here, so that should be standard operation. I mean, I don't necessarily agree with it, but we've already had this conversation, you know, we've worked hard to reduce the punitive nature of our parking plan, but if somebody's putting it, you know, thumb in their nose in your face or however you wanna phrase it, I guess you gotta take steps like this.
I think that, I think the purpose is the city has to back up its laws. And if, and if the laws are being flagrantly violated, then the city has to use the options that are available to it.
All right, thank you.
Are there modifications that you would wish to, to put in this? Because if there are, we've not, we, we're still reading the same ordinance that was presented last time.
No, I mean, apparently, if we don't state in here that if you're booted, you know, you gotta bring everything up to date, but if that's just standard practice or allow, we are allowed to do that, then.
This is an enforcement mechanism.
Right.
Enforcement mechanisms are intended to, now, of course, maybe a later payment plan. I mean, they're entitled by law to enter into a payment plan, and I would say that as long as they are complying with that payment plan set up through the municipal court, then, you know, that would, you know, that would enable them to get their vehicle back. But they would have to meet the requirements that the, that the judge sets out in order to be
You don't put it in hard line that, you know, exactly how it has to be adjudicated at the end. That's why we have a judge, and that's why people come in and they're heard and so forth.
They have discretion.
Right.
Which the judge does use discretion all the time with all of our current, anybody that comes in, I mean.
Well, law enforcement officer. I mean, every police officer exercises discretion carrying their duties.
So if you get down to the boot, we've already exhausted all those.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, you know, a person is not gonna get booted unless
How far can friendly be on a
Around the carousel five or six times.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
It also comes down to public perception.
Parker Carl to Hendrick and no
We've hammed and ticked and years and years to get to this point, so.
But it also comes down to public perception. I've had people who have talked with people who've had to pay fines, for whatever reason, they missed their first or second notice. They had to pay their fine, and then the first thing thrown to my face, well, what about so-and-so because they're always there and they're never ticketed? And I know they're there every day because I see them. So nothing's being done, and why am I being singled out?
It could be the period of enforcement, because we only enforce from nine to three.
Well, but the point is, is that these people that I've talked to know the law or know the ordinance, they helped write the ordinance at times, and they're, or were the violators just because of proximity of where they happen to be on a regular basis. So, yeah, perception is a huge issue with this.
These folks brought that forward to City Hall and to the law, parking enforcement officer filed a complaint, appeared before council, and brought it to our attention.
No, they did their duty and paid their fines.
But I mean.
But they're offended, but they're offended that other people aren't being
One of the most frustrating, one of the most frustrating things to tolerate is having a set of rules, and after the fact, somebody comes in and says, well, so-and-so broke that rule, but I didn't wanna say anything about it. I don't know how to handle something like that.
Well, I think, I don't understand your statement because we are handling it.
We are, but I'm saying.
And we are passing an ordinance that's going to say.
No, I'm saying the citizen that comes to you, Mr. Rigor, says, you know, I don't wanna say this in public, I'm gonna say this privately behind closed doors to you. I know so-and-so gets away with this all the time, but I don't wanna ever say anything. I never wanna bring it to anybody's attention.
They may have.
I don't want my name to be used.
Well.
You know, that, that gets to a point where, let me finish, please, that gets to a point where, you know, you have to say, I'm sorry, you're not gonna help the problem. You're not assisting with the problem. You're not helping.
I don't necessarily know if I agree with that, people pay their fines and say, I just don't think it's right to, you know, I paid my fine, I paid my fine, but I'm concerned other people aren't, and we actually brought that to people's attention, so.
And nothing was done, or?
Obviously, we're working on this ordinance, so something's being accomplished.
I think I could speak to that point. The enforcement of any law is only, I mean, a law enforcement officer has to witness the offense in order to enforce the law. And if a person is, is getting away with parking illegally, I would suggest that maybe it's because they just haven't been caught yet, and if not, that they are being, you know, treated differently than anyone else. I think that our parking enforcement officer and, and the city police enforce our laws fairly inequitably regardless of who is causing the infraction. That if, you know, when I was on council, we had a major controversy over the use of license plate readers by city police. Many of you recall that controversy. The attitude was that we do not want to live in a surveillance state where people are, where the, the license plate readers are walking or driving up and down, you know, running numbers and checking them against databases all hours of the day and night. Similarly, the flip side of that concern is that sometimes offenders will not be caught. And so you can, we can kind of have things one way or another, but not both. You can either live in a surveillance state or occasionally, some people are gonna get away with offenses. And it's, and it's up to the council and any lawmaking body to, you know, balance those two, you know, forces or competing concerns. And I, you know, that's, that's, that's why you're the lawmakers, is to, is to strike that balance. That's my guidance.
I would encourage anyone who knows of someone they think is getting special treatment, bring it to our attention. And if we don't act on it, then shame on us.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there, are we finished with discussion? Okay. All those in favor of passing ordinance 462 on second and final reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign, opposed. Let the minutes reflect that the ordinance passes unanimously and will be effective 30 days from now, as all ordinances.
How many boots are we buying?
Can I ask Tom another question?
Sure. Tom, you still here?
I'm still here. I would imagine one or two. But I think that would leave that up to the enforcement professionals to determine. Mr. McCauley, have a question.
We know we're all sensitive to this new Stalker voting coming up, and I have posed the question a couple of different times about the Foster jut out. Mrs. Capery, every time I see her, reminds me that that's my property where that is. I didn't get it resolved with Mr., I just want that to be on your radar screen that we can, you know, when Jerry's ready to start raising the old Capery garage and trying to get ready to break ground, I just want it to be out there for you.
Yeah, well, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a situation.
Yeah, I figured just.
The sooner we get it resolved, I mean, isn't there a secondary issue not only with jutting out on the side, but the addition built on city property?
Well, that is the addition, the addition is what juts out on the side, I think. We're talking about where the
Where there's a pathing that juts out to the side, but I, I was also under the impression that the addition put on the back of the original building right by the garage was on three foot on city property.
I'm not aware of that.
We might wanna, before we talk to the owner, we might wanna figure that out, maybe we could
Well, there needs to be a
Compromise.
The solution would be, the first thing that needs to happen is have a survey done and find, or at least
That should be done now.
Where the markers are, where the, where the, where the corners are, and, and see what the exact facts are of the situation before we
And we, so I would, I would support getting that order in to get that survey because it might take a while.
I'll, yeah, it's a little compliment.
All right. Thank you for that note. Okay. We have one final item on strategic issues for discussion on our vote. Mr. Sanders has a Wambsby update for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had alluded to this in the closing remarks of 2022, but that I would be coming forward with much more information about Wambsby in 2023, and we're working on a six-month-out news release, we'll get with the media very, very soon on that. And this is, normally I use this at the time of council members' remarks and announcements to talk about it, but I felt that we should start making some of the more, the items that'll take more of a discussion instead of holding them back for that last minute, when it should be about positivity and all of this, and this is about positivity. We should bring these up to agenda that I would encourage other council members, if they have something that they need, that's gonna have a broader discussion.
Just submit, submit.
Submit it to, to make it on the agenda. And that's one of the reasons I did this, but we had a very good meeting, a board meeting today for Wambsby, we meet every two weeks, we're gonna start reaching out more to the community. We have several people who have signed up to be volunteers to the Volunteer Center on our city website and the Wambsby website, and we're gonna start having more committee meetings now, several times a week, so we can have shorter meetings with fewer people and then report back to the board with the results. We now have registered and working to come to the United States 30-member band from Ireland, 100-member band from Africa. We have three bands from Canada that are under the same production umbrella, but they're three separate bands, a total of 458 individuals who will be here to perform from Calgary. And the leader and the PR people from that group on February 3rd, 4th, and 5th will be coming to Baccan to do a site visit. They will be joined by Brian Egleson, who directed the Wambsby event in Palm Springs a few years back. He'll be flying in from Palm Springs to also walk the facilities and give his recommendations for the production elements and execution of the event, so that'll be February 3rd, 4th, and 5th. We expect a few of these other groups to also start doing more regular site business. We have a 50-member band from El Salvador, 39-member band from Germany, 70-member band from Switzerland, 110-person band from California, a group, I don't have a definite number, from Taiwan. We have 60-member band coming from Chile, 80-person band coming from Poland, 162-member band from Costa Rica, 90-member band from Honduras, 45-member band from Switzerland, 190-member band from Honduras, another 100-person band from Honduras, 102 people from El Salvador, 40-person band from Hong Kong, 70-person band from Ohio, 85 people, person band from Sweden, 68-person band from Colombia, 100-person band from Venezuela, 40-person band from Wisconsin, 105-person band from Poland, a group from Czech, Czech Republic, and finally, 40-person band from Nigeria. Now, they're, they're registered, they're paying their dues to come in, they still have the visa process to go through. Some of these embassies have put them on a very tight window. We lost a couple of bands because there are some countries who were not issuing visas until 2025. So we, we just, there's some, there's some visas. So I expect there'll be some attrition that will lose a few of these bands because of visa problems. There may be some, some that just can't get the final dollar put together, but Wesley has executed contracts to fill up their dorms and have gotten positive responses from everybody. We're working with Didi College, with AB, with hotels that can handle large groups and so forth, so it's all starting to really formulate nicely. I went to Chicago a week ago to attend the Midwest Clinic International Band and Orchestra Conference and met the folks from Conselmer, who pledged tonight's sponsorship for us. They produce many of the band instruments that are used throughout the United States, about some of the premier jazz musicians, so they're, they're committed to be a partner with us on this as well. We had another robust meeting with our volunteer coordinator, Sarah Campbell, and we're gonna start meeting on a regular basis weekly with her and getting a list of volunteers. We're gonna go to, to every group that we can think of, ask for volunteers to assist with this, and making those assignments and so forth. While I was in Chicago, I met with Dado from Bangkok, Thailand, who directed the Wambsby event in 2022, and Councilman Rollins has agreed to assist me, and he did, he did bring this with me, and David, you'll speed up a little bit. This is a tradition that goes from country to country to country, and it's the traveling flag that is displayed over the competition, and the banners, it needs steamed out a little bit, I didn't get that done, but you'll see on the edges here, the names of every country this flag is flown in, and it'll fly over, it'll fly over the competition here. So we're now in possession of the official Wambsby traveling flag. Let me give, I'll sneak that little one here and let me hand that one back.
In late.
This last flew in Bangkok, Thailand. We're gonna keep it here, and it'll fly over the festivities and the competition in Baccan in West Virginia, USA. And then, at the conclusion of our competition, representatives from Rostre, Germany, who will be in attendance, will take the flag with them back to Germany. So it is official. We're just about six months away.
I'll do, I'll, let me, let me
Will you play my role?
Let me do your duty for a second, I was asleep at the wheel, I'm gonna
That's okay. So, yeah, a little tight, nice and tight.
All right, CJ, smile.
Yes, yes, this competition will be going to Rostre, Germany.
All right, y'all smile, one, two, three, one, two, three, all right.
All right. So the Rostre, Germany folks will be here in Baccan, spending the week with us, and then they'll take this flag with them back to Germany. So that is my update for Wambsby. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilman Rollins.
Thank you.
And we'll have more reports coming.
Sounds good. Thank you, Randy. Started out the meeting, said it was gonna be a big year, so here we go. All right, we are down to council comments and announcements, and we will begin over here on the left with Mrs. Buckloo.
I'm really happy about the training facility that we're getting, and I think once we get that up and running, that we should probably try to start a, up a junior volunteer program, which I've talked about for a long time, and trying to get started here. I think that'd be the perfect place to get it started. And also, I wanna congratulate Robbie for his new endeavor, and it's a damn good thing you're young.
Three jobs, eight hours each, 24 hours a day, math works out.
Yeah. That's it.
Thanks, Pam. Mr. McCauley.
Two observations and then two questions. First, I, I remember back in the 1980s when Harley Brown was our public works director and Bud Bennett was our fire chief, and we ended up, when we were trying to go from a five to a four with the ISO rating, we ended up six points shy. And one of the things they specifically wrote the city up for was that we didn't have enough water down on South Spring Street. Harley Brown took great umbrage with that, and he, they came back and watched us blow the lid off of a manhole 20 feet into the air, that thing was probably 100 pounds. So ISO reevaluated Baccan and gave us five points, and we were one point shy of going from a five to a four. So to, so to be talking about going to a three and be looking at it too, that just tells you where we have come in the last 35, 40 years as a fire department.
Well, and to your point, the water department plays a humongous role, as, as much or more as, as the fire department does.
Absolutely, absolutely. Of all the good things that we discussed tonight on a very packed agenda, and I meant to catch it before I left, the, the best news of the night was seeing Joe Vaxa up and, you know, being, being good old Joe. Are there any updates on the Stalker financing? We, we Um, are, are there any updates on the Stockard financing? Do we, do we have any timetables on that? Are we gonna try to knock this out in the first quarter, or is it gonna be second quarter, twenty?
So, so, uh, we, you, you'll recall that we initially talked about that our goal was to break ground in the, in, you know, the, the March-April timeframe. Because of, so bond council has, or, shoot, um, the building commission has met. Bond council has been approved, as you know. We did that last meeting. But in that meeting, Tom Ammon, uh, with Ambie also kind of from research done that because the USDA is, you know, they're with the federal government, I mean, we, they can't even pick a freaking speaker in, in, of the House in Washington DC, let alone, uh, figure out what the, what the budgets are gonna be. They, Tom was believing that we were gonna be a little bit delayed in that because of just federal government backwash, uh, not, and not being as efficient as possible. Is that, we're, we're not moving as fast as we thought we were.
Oh, we can't. If we're, if we're going to, and we are, we're exploring the USDA, which we think is gonna have the lowest interest rates. I thought I mentioned that the last meeting. But, um, we did the preliminary application. Jay and I worked on that and got that in. Uh, they feel pretty confident they're gonna accept us to go to the next step for USDA, but they said they don't even have their funding yet. Um, so we have to, so we have to get the design work done. That has to be done before, pretty much done. I think Jay said they want seventy percent of that final plan's done to submit to them. We're also at the same time, so we kinda have to coordinate this because the banks won't hold rates for us forever. I mean, we, we ran into that with ways they, they couldn't hold the rates on a truck that we couldn't get delivered for over a year. So, um, we have to coordinate this to approach the banks as soon as we're close to finishing to see what the rates are with USDA. We think we know that what the rates will be with USDA, which will probably be where we end up going because we make it some grant money too. So, but we have to balance all this, and we have to wait on, to make sure they have funding. They have to do their approval processes and their application's kind of more complex. We already finished a lot of it, but we have to do more.
In the back, to, to, to fill in a little bit more, it's not slowing anything down because we had a meeting, Stockard Youth and Community Center.
Very late today.
Late meeting today with the Mills Group involved, and they're in the process of, of working on the final design. They know we need that for the USDA application. We're scheduling some road trips to look at some other facilities to tweak out a few of some of the minor details and so, whether major detail, but detail. So just kind of to reiterate, everything is moving along at a pretty good pace. So one thing is not holding the other one up, and, and I, I said I do not want, as, as one board member of Stockard, I do not want us waiting for anything, not waiting for a grant, not waiting for this or that. We're gonna keep moving, 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 and what happens in a positive manner is just icing on the cake.
And when Tom was in here, I asked him about first steps for resolving the property issue on the corner building, and it's in a survey. So I think.
We have a survey on that property.
We have, where we, what we purchased from Catherine the last time.
We have a survey on the property. We have, we have surveys.
And you might want to share it with Tom and.
They talked.
Hopefully, we can get this resolved with them. So Tom says they got a survey.
Yeah, we had, when I went in, I talked to Jerry to confirm that there was a survey accomplished. I mean, that's, that's the beginning of the inquiry. It's not certainly at the end of it.
So if we were to guesstimate when we're gonna break ground on this new voting, are we looking at June, July? Is that, I mean, I'm, I'm not holding anybody to anything. I'm just, people wanting up. And, uh, I think that's a re, we wanna match, everybody wants it to get started and finished as quickly as we can.
Amy, I would recommend, you know, today, today we, uh, I, I reminded Deborah Brockelman that we'd like to have a monthly report from Stockard Youth and Community Center for the activities and so forth. That should be included in our first of the month package moving forward. Perhaps we could just make an agenda item the first of the, the first meeting of the month to have any updates, if there's updates on Stockard Youth and Community Center financing, uh, architectural-wise, property-wise. I mean, I think that, like Mr. McCollum said, the public is interest, interested in when this is going to take place. And again, back to what I said earlier, let's get these items on the agenda and discuss them instead of, you know, having to wait till the end of the meeting because they weren't an agenda item to bring them to the table. So maybe we should just, if the mayor's okay with that, considering it, making a Stockard Report monthly update. Yeah, part of the agenda.
Yeah, the longer we wait, the more expensive it's gonna be.
Well, I saw a piece, the feds are not gonna drop rates in twenty twenty-three. So what you, what you, whatever's gonna be quoted to you by USDA, you know that.
Which we're around four right now, a little, little south of four. About three point eight five is where we're at right now.
We're trying our best.
And, and, and they, and as we all know, USDA does not, it doesn't, you know, right now, prime is for commercial, commercial lending is like eight point three. So USDA is a three point eight. So they're not following the same cadence, which is great. Um, but, you know, they, they still are not exempt from increases.
The only other question I have, we talked at the first meeting in December about acting in January on the property swap with potentially the college or another party. Is that, are we gonna?
We have, we have not been able to get together with our friends up the street yet. They, they just did get the property. Uh, it is now, I believe, public. It's public, right? They were at the county commission this morning. I think they, it was in, it was in an article in my Buchanan.
About.
The property behind the. No, the property behind the courthouse.
Oh, yes, Chancery Street, yes.
So, so the county commission, um, this, this is, this is, this is a big reason why we wanted to pump the brakes here. The county commissioners, um, they were able to obtain property directly behind the courthouse uh, along Chancery Street and along Locust Street down to, um, about where the old Chinese restaurant building is. And so, uh, we wanted to talk, you know, about could this be a potential, uh, partnership in some way with, 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 um, one of our options, um, on the, on the same street? So, um, we have not had a chance to meet with them yet. One of, one of the commissioners is very interested in it. Um, his father-in-law is, uh, very, very ill. And so he asked if we could meet, not this upcoming week, but the following week about it. So we'll try to hope to have it on the agenda maybe for the first of February. So.
Great. That's all I have. A happy new year to everybody.
Thank you. Uh, Jack.
Well, uh, Mr. Mayor, congratulations on all your endeavors. And whatever you do in February eighth and eleventh, please don't wear Speedos.
Don't you worry, Jack.
Thank you.
Or a wet suit.
Nope, not wearing that either.
You're doing us all a favor, Mr. Mayor. But, uh, you know, special Olympics, what a tremendous organization. And.
I come from a family of swimmers, though.
I think you might have, uh, my mother said you might have been left behind the barn door.
I think the fire department, my goodness, what, what more can we say about them? They're tremendous. Uh, we, we have a quality, uh, group people, Shane, uh, Strawberry Festival, you know, Shane Jenkins is a fireman. And, um, you know, this just demonstrates the quality that we have. It's, whatever they touch appears to turn to, to gold. And we're fortunate to have them. We certainly need to commend them and support them in their training and the visions that they have. Uh, I think that's tremendous. One of the things that I miss, and I regret not asking, I'd like to, on their training facility, is to get a diagram or a sketch of what it's gonna be. You know, it's too ethereal for me is, is what they're.
And I don't think we've gotten that far yet. Um, because, yeah, we could certainly, so the only thing that has been done so far is we have done some preliminary work out on the site, which is out in the public area, just moving water lines around to get it ready. But, uh, Joey, JB, myself, and I think maybe Brian Elmore, we went over about a year ago to Bridgeport. It was cold. It was the wintertime, and we looked at their training facility, which is directly behind their, their city fire department on Main Street. And that's kind of what we're looking at, um, but just conceptually. But, you know, we have, we have not specifically drawn up anything here yet for what ours will be. So, but, yeah.
And of course, the IPO, that's, that's tremendous. I will be calling Hank in the morning. My homeowner's just coming due, and, uh, remind him that we're now.
There you go. Get that ten percent. Thanks, Jack. Mr. Thomas.
Just I endorse what everybody said, Jack and Pam and David. It was a very good council meeting. It's an honor and privilege to be on council. And happy new year to everybody. And that's it.
Thanks, David. CJ.
So, uh, the training center for the fire department, I think that's going to be a big, uh, a big plus for recruitment and, and just the professional, uh, nature of the fire department. I think it's, uh, it's important, you know, when we are investing money and effort into the, into the Buchanan Fire Department, that we are also providing services outside of the city. And when I asked a question about ISO, that the first due is also benefits from that reduced ISO rating. And I think at some point here in the future, we're going to have to have some very difficult, challenging conversations about first due fire fees and how we can, uh, provide the delivery of emergency services, not only in the municipality, but outside the limits. And, uh, so I, I look forward to those conversations.
Glad you do.
So do I. But, uh, you know, at, at some point, we're going to need to do that, and I think it's probably this year at some point. So that's all I have.
Thank you, CJ. Mr. Sanders.
Uh, well, I agree with everyone else, but, but a great meeting, good way to start, uh, you know, twenty twenty-three. Proud of the work that the city did in twenty twenty-two. I think our crew did an exceptional job, got it through a, a good year. Uh, post, sort of post-COVID, I guess. We can say post-COVID for the most part now. So, uh, we have our librarian here, so kudos to the work that, uh, that all of our, all of the different groups and all of the different folks that contribute to the fabric of Buchanan do each and every day. So it's been a great twenty twenty-two. Looking forward to a fantastic twenty twenty-three with all the excitement, all the work going on. I, I would mention, you know, the sidewalks are beginning to start pouring, the sidewalks now back in, uh, Florida Street. And anyone listening out there, you know, there, there, we purposely left the one side of the sidewalks in while we took the other side sidewalks out. And it just, it marvel, I marvel at the fact that I'll see people walking up the street, out in the street. I guess they're used to working on a particular side of a sidewalk, but please be careful because sometimes at night it's dark and you have dark clothing on. Go ahead and take advantage of that other full sidewalk across the street. That's my public service announcement to end the evening with. I've seen it so many times that I just think, then go to the other side, please. You know, so, so, yes, you, we'll always have a sidewalk for you, Buchanan. May only be one for, for a few weeks, but we'll always have a sidewalk for you. Thank you.
Thank you. How do you follow it?
I don't know how I follow. I don't know how I follow.
I was gonna kind of explain like.
Cat and dog behavior.
I feel like I always go on the left side.
There you go. There's one, there's one of the culprits.
Take, take the heart when I say.
No, I know what you mean at night, but.
Thank you, everybody, for, for, uh, for a great first meeting. Um, looking forward to a wonderful twenty twenty-three. And, uh, with that, I'll, I'll be quiet at eight fifty-seven. Let's adjourn. Have a good weekend.